We know and recognize that some of our neighbors have taken this discussion further along than we have in the last several months. But I want to assure everyone that there is still plenty of time to undertake thoughtful deliberations with regard to how this funding will most benefit the town of Concord. As you listen to this evening's presentation, please keep in mind two items. First, that the focus of ARPA is on equity, promoting equitable outcomes and providing an equitable recovery from the pandemic. And second, that the US Department of Treasury, the agency that is overseeing ARPA spending, urges local government leaders to engage their community in how to allocate ARPA funds, and specifically calling out the need to design an equitable public input process. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Chris Carmody, our administrative manager, who has been our lead staff person in understanding ARPA. Chris?
Thanks, Carrie, and thanks, members of the select board, for making time to talk about this. I do have a slide deck prepared, and I will pull that up. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
So, the ARPA, we have talked, we have received public comment over the last few weeks and months about jargon and technical words that the town uses frequently. And unfortunately, that happens at the federal level much more frequently and intensively. So I will try to strip down as much of that jargon as possible. When ARPA is the third of the five COVID relief bills passed by the US government. It's the largest in terms of funding and is generally seen as the successor to the CARES Act. So, we, ARPA is absolutely gigantic. And different from the CARES Act, it is intended to respond directly to states and local governments, indirectly to states and local governments, and through a variety of federal agencies. So it was signed into law, authorized 1.8 trillion dollars, signed the law March 11, 2021. And of, there's a little bit of a slotting system, so 1.8 trillion authorized nationwide. 350 billion was appropriated for state, local, and tribal governments across the country. That fund, that 350 billion, was, is called the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which we will refer to herein as the Fiscal Recovery Funds. So it's a small section of ARPA. Of the 350 billion authorized for the fiscal recovery funds nationwide, Massachusetts received 8.7 billion. And of the 8.7, 3.4 billion was allocated to cities and towns in Massachusetts. And of that, Concord has been granted 5.654 million in direct fiscal recovery funds. The federal calculation for fiscal recovery funds was deliberately weighted towards low-income communities and communities disproportionately impacted by COVID. A few other notes about the fiscal recovery funds. The recipients of the awards bear the burden of demonstrating compliance with ARPA, and they're subject to certain reporting requirements. There's two parts. The bill is enacted to join together eligibility with allowable uses. So there are two different parts. The US Treasury issued its first rule on the fiscal recovery funds, and really ARPA, in May 2021, and then went through an extensive public comment period and issued its final rule about two weeks ago, in January. The period of performance that federal government has allowed, because this bill is so gigantic, it's allowing recipients up to December 31, 2024, to obligate the funds, and then an additional two years after that to spend it, because it takes time to process this properly. There are generally eight large categories of eligible uses, and then there's four to five categories of prohibited uses, which I'll go into at the end. So just very quickly, lost revenue is the first category of eligible uses. Concord, in the final ruling, cities and towns could use the entire amount of their awards. So Concord is eligible to use up to 5.654 million of its award for lost revenue. For the second use is public health. That's on COVID-19 mitigation and prevention. I believe the town has used a lot of money from the CARES Act, the predecessor bill, on COVID equipment. But this also covers vaccines, testing, health data systems, public communication, technical assistance. The bill is really designed to provide relief to cities and towns that have suffered public health and negative economic impacts. And those are really, conceptually, the drivers to eligibility throughout the bill. So in terms of negative economic impacts, the first, there's generally three categories, and then there's a catch-all, I'm sorry, four categories, and there's a catch-all, which is all impacted industries. But the first is households and communities that are at 300% or below the federal poverty guideline. The second category is what they call disproportionately impacted households and communities, where income, median household income is at or below 185% of the federal poverty guideline for our area. Small businesses, which are either defined by the Small Business Act or have less than 500 employees. Assistance to nonprofits, which can be demonstrated in the form of decreased revenue or increased costs, and then the catch-all is aid to impacted industries. The fourth category is public sector capacity. That's paying for payroll and cover benefits for three areas in the public sector, which is public safety, public health, and human services. It would cover the salary and benefits spent on specifically the COVID-19 response. It also applies to rehiring public staff who are laid off or forlorn as of January 27, 2020. The fifth category is capital expenditures. This is a little bit, it's probably their largest area that they allow. And it is, the reporting requirements get a little bit, they get more strict, the more it is requested in assistance for the capital expenditures. So this would apply to programs, services, and capital expenditures that respond to public health or negative impact, negative economic impact of the pandemic. Generally, capital expenditures less than a million dollars do not require written justification. That is, the written justification has a defined term under the final Treasury rule, where they want a pretty lengthy justification for how this capital expenditure specifically responds to public health or a negative economic impact because of the pandemic. So there's three parts to that. There's up to less than a million dollars, there's a million dollars to $10 million, and then there's above $10 million, with $10 million requiring the most strict reporting requirements. The sixth category is premium pay, eligible paid, which is to eligible workers providing essential work during the pandemic, which is up to $13 per hour above regular pay, and no more than $25,000 for any singular worker. Eligible workers are from a defined list and perform essential work that's defined under the Act. The seventh category is water and infrastructure for necessary investments in water and sewer infrastructure. These particularly apply to two federal programs. The EPA's Clean Water State Revolving Funds and the EPA's Drinking Water State Revolving Funds. There are two different programs under the EPA. They would apply to, both of them are eligible for use of the funds that the town has received. And then there's a catch-all for other necessary projects, other necessary investment in infrastructure, but again, that it has to relate to the pandemic. And then the eighth category is broadband infrastructure, which identifies an eligible area. This program is a little bit more loose and allows the town some flexibility, where the town will be responsible for identifying eligible area based on one of three categories, a lack of access to reliable high-speed broadband, or a lack of affordable broadband, or a lack of reliable service. And then the town will be responsible for designing a program to meet the needs. Prohibited uses, the town cannot use any of the federal fiscal recovery funds for funding pension funds, for paying debt service, or rainy day funds, or stabilization funds, or financial reserves, paying settlements or legal judgments, unless they are very specifically tied to COVID, or generally any purposes that contravene ARPA. There is a federal infrastructure funds bill that was signed into law in November 2021. This is a completely separate bill. It's the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And the, I've been asked to just provide a brief update on this. It's totally different than ARPA, and the federal government is still shaping up this program and coming up with guidelines. We have seen some initial numbers come out from the US Department of Transportation. It would provide 1.2 trillion dollars nationwide. It looks like right now it would provide 5.3 billion dollars to Massachusetts over five years for the Federal Highway Formula, 13 billion for the Fixing America Safe Transportation Act, FAST Act, 2.8 billion over five years for public transportation, 63 million over five years for an expansion of the electric charging stations, 244 million over five years for infrastructure development at airports in Massachusetts, and then the competitive grant programs for a series of other programs. We will post this, this actually is included in the board packet, this deck, and we would encourage people to consult these resources that are being updated constantly, which include the US Treasury Department's website on the fiscal recovery funds, the Massachusetts website dedicated to this, it's the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which has issued a series of statements on the best uses of fiscal recovery funds in the Commonwealth. And then the National League of Cities, the NLC, tracks actual municipal expenditures to see how towns are spending these funds, and it also gives Concord a sense of how other towns are doing. That is my presentation.
Thank you very much, Chris, for that overview. And we're going to be stopping during this meeting at several points for question and answers. So this is the first point. If people have questions and the answers about the overview and the eligibility criteria, if you want to raise your physical or virtual hand, I see Matt Johnson and then Susan Bates.
So thanks, Chris, for that overview. And I had not been previously aware until this weekend about, among those categories of eligible use, that the first one, lost revenue, now with the final rule, would apply to up to all of the money that we've been allocated. So to some extent, we could say, hey, we lost this much revenue because they now have a standard $10 million that they consider you have lost by default, and roll the money into our budgetary process, our overall townwide budgetary process, and we're done. You know, I don't know that we have to earmark the funds for any of these other purposes at that point. And while we, you know, we have town goals that are well-aligned with the goals of ARPA, so, you know, we'll spend the money wisely, perhaps over the next three years or so, and that it could help in so many respects, because of course, we, you know, we have a difficult escalating tax situation. We have needs that are not being fully met in the areas of affordable housing, et cetera. But I don't know that it's necessary to, you know, encumber the rest of our process, you know, with these funds being earmarked, other than just to recover the lost revenue, which is a use that we can declare. So that's my big, you know, question is, gosh, it always strikes me in budgeting that it's best to look at the whole pile of resources that we have, and then look at the full gamut of priorities that we have for spending, rather than to segment it and look at it separately if we don't have to.
Okay, thank you for that, Matt, for that. I see there are some other questions. I just want to offer up my opinion as a follow-up to what Matt said. Yes, it is not necessary that we report every single one of these projects in order to get the funds. On the other hand, I'm very excited tonight that we have such a good crowd. I think it's very important for us to all be talking together so that we, on the select board, understand what the community needs are, and we hear from the senior management team what is feasible, and we have a real good conversation about a lot of these different projects. And then as we continue forward, to continue with the transparency and the dialogue and the collaboration. The reporting to the feds is a different matter. No, it's not necessary that we do lots of nitty-gritty reporting, but I think it's really important to have good dialogue with all of our groups. So Susan was next, and then we have Chris Reynolds.
Thank you, Terry. My question's for Chris, and I think I know the answer, but it's a clarifying question. The page called eligible uses, you list the 1.84 million for FY21 and 2.18 million for FY22, and that's been identified, but obviously not earmarked, because we're just at the beginning of that process. Is that correct?
That's, that's right.
Okay, thank you. I want to say I'm sorry to be late. My email dropped me again, so I'd be in favor of broadband. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Chris Reynolds and then Carlin Reed.
Thank you, Terry. Matt, back to your question. When this thing first came out, I was pretty interested in the lost revenue concept, because we had experienced that, and my thought was, well, gee, we'd be eligible for that. I haven't gone through the latest version from Treasury, but I went through one that was probably, I don't know, eight weeks old. And the formula and the definitions of what that actually means, at least according to my reading, we did not qualify. I didn't see us qualifying under those rules. So I don't know whether anybody from senior staff has taken a look at the lost revenue requirements, but it needs more research. I don't think we could conclude easily that we could actually get those funds.
Christine, did you see the final rule that was published?
I did not.
Okay, the final rule that clarified, apparently, that all of our, that just by default, anything less than 10 million, that we can just declare to be a loss.
Oh, okay, good. I didn't see that. Thank you.
Yeah, so just to add to that, they create the final rule created two separate revenue calculations. One was a standard up to $10 million cap, and then one was a calculated one, where you actually calculate your lost revenue. And that first allowance was added to the final rule.
Okay.
So my question back to Christine is, does that make you interested in using this approach or not? I mean, I just, I'm trying to understand, am I an outlier here? Or, you know?
Yeah, I like it because it gives us more flexibility, so.
That was my thought.
Yeah, that's my thought.
We don't have to worry about what we're going to do with the money. We'll figure it out. We don't have to figure it out right now.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting what they would actually allow that.
Well, we're not going to figure it all out tonight. But I think, kind of how we report it to the feds, I feel really strongly that we have a plan that our citizens have input to, and that they know what the plan is.
I guess my suggestion is that plan is the town budget.
Okay, I hear you. So you have a slightly different viewpoint on this, and we may not decide tonight. We'll have to see. The next person is Carlin Reed.
Hi, Carlin Reed, AD3WIT, and I'm going to be advocating on behalf of a special interest, not the global approach that Matt has suggested. I'm very pleased to see that a low-income broadband program would be authorized as an appropriate use under these funds. Now, my understanding is that the light plan has already been discussing with members of my committee, the PEG Access Committee, on how to do such a low broadband income program. That's the kind of special interest project that could cross, cut across a number of the categories that are covered under the ARPA refund. So that's a consideration for your approach. I do have one question. Who's going to make the decision? Will it be the select board?
Yes, in conjunction with, you know, we don't want to make this in vacuum. We want the whole community to collaborate. So interim town manager will be making a lot of the decisions. The senior management team will be giving input, all the committees that are here tonight, and other committees. So the final decision, Carrie, do you want to talk about, does any of this have to go through town meeting and appropriations or not?
Sure, none, this is a grant fund, so it does not require any further appropriation.
Right. So I'm glad that Carlin brought that up. That brings up two more points. One is that enterprise funds are a consideration that we're going to have to think through, such as broadband, water, sewer, et cetera. And the other point is, Chris just did an overview, so we really didn't have time to go into this, but in addition to the 5.6 million that we're automatically getting, we can apply for additional money under ARPA for specific projects. And I know very, very little about that. If Chris, or Carrie, or anybody else knows anything more about that, if you want to briefly tell us about that.
Yeah, I haven't, I'd probably need a little bit more time to look into that. I mean, my really understanding is that the fiscal recovery funds have been allocated to Concord and for expansive, for expansive variety of uses. So in addition to that, I'm not really aware, I haven't really seen targeted uses under the fiscal recovery funds, but maybe, maybe Carrie has seen something more.
So the only thing that I would add is that we are aware that money, large sums of money are coming to the state. The state should have a capital projects fund, but we have not heard anything about eligibility and timetables. So I think the only thing that we have some definite information on is what we're talking about this evening, and we are watching those other programs, and we'll bring them to your attention as soon as we have additional information.
Okay, great. Let's see, I think our comment from Matt, and then we're going to move on to the next section.
Yeah, just responding to Carlin Reed's remark and your response to that. I mean, we have a very well-defined, transparent, and robust budget process, but we don't have a separate, you know, if this is an ad hoc process, where we're going to take this as kind of a slush fund and spend it, I'm less comfortable with that. We, you know, I would really like to use a formal process that's open and transparent, rather than us as a select board saying, hey, yeah, we like this project. It's 5.6 million dollars, a lot of money. I think that this needs to be, you know, formalized. We can't just look at it as, wow, there's a lot of neat new things we could do, and let's spend the money.
I think, I think probably everybody agrees with that. We don't want to treat this as a slush fund. We don't want to do it sloppy. We want to have a formal process, absolutely. So maybe, Matt, you and I are saying the same thing in two different ways. I just want to make sure that community has input and that the plan is posted on the website when we finally come up with it.
I was just further supporting the notion that if this money was used as claimed as lost revenue and rolled into our general budget process, that would be, I think, a more disciplined way to pursue this, perhaps.
Okay, all right, I see Mark Howell and Linda, and then after those two, we'll move on. Oops, and Kathleen, okay, three more people, and then we're definitely going to move on. Mark Howell.
Thank you. In terms of the way in which to approach this fund, I think we do need to recognize that these funds, in some sense, are a windfall and a one-time process. And I'm a little uncomfortable with dollars in this type, in this size, rolling into the normal budgetary process, because that process isn't necessarily focused on ensuring that one-time expenses don't create a drag on future budgets operationally. So I think that there's an awful lot to be said for focusing on the equity, especially, of course, focusing on the specific impacts of the pandemic, but looking towards those things where there can be a segregation of what these funds are spent on, precisely so that the impacts on future budgets are really well-understood before they're taken in. The 5.6 million dollars is a fair amount, and it could sort of cause us to become expecting that our, you know, operating budgets weren't growing as fast as they might grow if that sort of infusion was done, especially over a short number of years. So that's my general comment. I'm very happy to see that broadband is getting done, and, you know, as a member of the Fiber Broadband Task Force, I'll have some comments later about some ideas on that. But I wanted to comment in general on the allocation process here. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Kathleen?
My, I have a quick question for Chris. The fiscal lost revenue says it's to be used for government services. Is that defined in the program?
It is loosely defined. My interpretation is that it would go to operating expenses in Concord, but I can definitely pin down later a specific definition for you.
Okay, and Linda, I'll give you the last word in this section.
Well, I would just, before we spend too much more time on whether it's through the budget process or another process, I was going to comment that I think there are community needs that are not necessarily fully known by us, and that there is some real merit in at least understanding what those are. And then the other comment I would make was similar, I think, to what Mark, direction Mark was going in the sense that there is an opportunity here for some real infrastructure projects that we have. real infrastructure projects that we haven't had the opportunity for and/or some of the categories that were identified in ARPA itself that I would not necessarily like to see built into an annual budget process alone. So that we can at least evaluate the scope of the, the need, need in the different categories as well as identify metrics for evaluation against those categories. So I, I think we'll be talking more about this as we go along, so I'll just stop there.
Yes, we definitely will be talking a lot about this. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Chris, if you could share my slides. It's page 21 in the packet. So while he's getting that up, I'm only going to talk for a few minutes about what other towns are doing and kind of a broad overview. And after that, we're gonna move on to hearing some ideas from the interim town manager and the senior staff and unions. And then we're going to have another question and answer period after that, which isn't showing on the agenda, but I, I'm adding it in. So Chris and I attended an MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and it was very interesting to see and hear from them in style. They're not in a rush. You're trying to plan properly. They want to finish up some capital projects and do some with lost revenue. And one of the things they tried was they, with the CARES money, they tried to give it out to people for rental assistance. Only 25% of that money was used. So it was not a successful program. So they're, they're not going to continue that under ARPA. So that's interesting. Carlisle had a different approach. They're gonna hire an auditor to track all the tracking that's needed for ARPA funds. And their select board set up an ARPA committee to recommend how to spend the money. In Lexington, they're getting recommendations from their senior management team and they're hiring a management analyst to track and administer the funds. Sudbury is about the same size as Concord and they set up an ARPA site on their webpage and held a public forum. And so they're getting 5 point something million. And in the forum, they received 29 million of suggestions. So I'm really hoping tonight that we do not get into that high, high number of suggestions, but it's a start at least. So it's, it's interesting. We don't have expectations to be so high that we're gonna be able to solve every problem that existed. And in Hudson, they're gonna focus on stormwater, wastewater and a fire truck. So five different approaches from five different towns. MAPC itself is working with Somerville on conducting these forums and surveys to get public feedback in several North Shore communities. They are going to fund accountants, I guess, to track the reporting requirements. And in many communities, MAPC is doing several projects to address the digital divide, increasing digital literacy and digital infrastructure. And my last slide is probably the most important. Oh, and one more thing that MAC, MAPC was doing, energy retrofits for affordable housing. And that really ties into this last slide. We have several years to spend this money. So we want to do a lot of listening and reflecting. You don't want to rush into anything. So I anticipate this is the first of several discussions. And what's really important is to accomplish multiple objectives and to grow, go across silos. So for example, let's say we bought some buses for cross-town connect, a transportation program. Obviously, this is gonna help folks who don't have cars and need to get around. It's also going to help workers come into town, which is a goal of economic vitality. It's also going to make us a more welcoming town, a goal of DEI. And it will help people drive less and reduce fossil fuels. So we have four objectives from all different areas in town that could be accomplished with one project. This is the way they want us to think about it. And I, I think it's the right way to try and accomplish as much as we can with the money that we have. And using this equity lens to think about underserved and vulnerable groups and to end up with equal access or equal outcomes. Having maximum citizen engagement and transparency and the bottom line at the end, will the spending improve the quality of life? That's the big question. Every time we consider a project, that's the question. So that's really it for my slides and we're gonna go on now to Carrie and the SMT team to see what they've come up with.
Thank you, Terry. Wait a moment for the slides to, to pop up. So I know Chris talked about eight different categories of spending. We have, in this next section, really focused on five categories of spending and wanted to put some information out there. There are, are a number of members of the senior management team that are here that are, are going to speak to some of these points. And I know there are members of, of the audience from various committees that also are interested in offering some information. So the first category of spending is to address the public health emergency. And what I would say at this point is the town is still experiencing costs related to the pandemic. We do testing. We have purchased test kits for, for certain members of the public. We have the vaccine clinics. We still have overtime that is related to people being out in, on COVID protocols. So we are still experiencing some expenses. But we are generally of the belief that, that FEMA and NEMA will be covering those expenses because they are either related to expenses in our public safety departments or in public health. The MAPC has come out and said that additional COVID-related costs should be assumed by the state's allocation. So certainly if there, there are certain expenses that maybe aren't FEMA or NEMA eligible for reimbursement, we would be looking to the state to, to assist in any of those costs. Also in this category, eligible expenses would include programs that address behavior, behavioral health, substance abuse and food insecurity. And we definitely are seeing these as issues. And I know Kate Hodges is here and I know she does not expect me to call on her for this section, but Kate, if you had anything that you wanted to add specifically, I know this was a budget request that we set aside some additional funding in human services to beef up some of the existing programs that we have. I don't know if Kate, oh, she did pop up, so I.
I'm here.
Do you, do you have anything you'd like to mention about how, how we could allocate some, some of the CARES funding to help us out in these areas?
Yeah, sure. And, and you're right, Carrie. It, it, it was something that we highlighted in our, in our budget documents. We have seen particularly over the past two years or so, a, a huge increase in a whole variety of mental health issues ranging from hoarding cases to severe substance abuse to elder abuse and not as much food insecurity, but certainly cost of living rental and utility payments. And I think, you know, if, and, and when people want to, you know, look into, certainly the police department has been dealing with a, a number of, of mental health cases. People who, you know, are either in crisis or soon to be in crisis need to be brought to the hospital and, and sectioned, meaning, you know, detained for their own well-being or threatening to do self-harm or in some cases have harmed themselves. So we had proposed to spend some amount of money and we were looking, you know, in the neighborhood of about 50 to 75,000 or so to have somebody come in from the outside on a consultant basis and be available for folks who either don't have adequate care through their own health insurance plan or to run trainings on, you know, some of the more prevalent cases and, and things that happen in our community, including things like the hoarding and, and how do we de-escalate situations? And I know the chief has been very proactive about doing that with the officers, but that isn't the only forward-facing agency that's been dealing with this. And I, I think we definitely need some outreach to, and, and some training, both to teach, you know, our social workers and also to teach family members that are living with somebody who's, who's either having a mental health crisis or having some kind of decline.
Thank, thanks, Kate. So a, as Kate mentioned, about 50 to $75,000 was the original request that was put in the fiscal 23 budget. At this point in time, that is not something that we have funded in the budget. There were a number of priorities and obviously a limited amount of, of new funding to be able to match up with those priorities. And this is not one that we were able to fund. So that, that is something that we would be interested in some additional consideration for. Chris, could you go to the next slide, please? So obviously, we put this slide together before we heard your discussion earlier this evening about, about lost revenue. We, we originally used the, the guidance in the original formula in the preliminary ruling from the Department of Treasury. And we, we looked at the calculation and we determined that we believed in calendar year 20, we had about, we could demonstrate a $1.4 million loss of revenue and in calendar 21, a 5.8 revenue loss. I know Chris had a lower number that maybe came from a more recent variation of the formula. But again, the new ruling from earlier this month provides a standard allowance, so to speak, of, of $10 million. So again, 100% of our, our spending could be claimed as lost revenue. I would mention that as a part of the fiscal 22 budget process, the current year budget, there was an assumption that $400,000 would be claimed in lost revenue for parking meter receipts. So for anybody following our budget discussions in fiscal 21 or 22, you know that even though our parking meters were not operational for a lot of that time, we still had expenses that were being incurred in terms of maintenance and, and contracts that we had entered into. So we did incur expenses. And so of, of the $5.6 million, we're really talking about $5.2 million because of that commitment that was made through the fiscal 22 budget process. And at this point in time, we, we were focusing more on programs and capital expense and not looking to request additional funds to be claimed as lost revenue. But obviously, we understand this is the, the select board is, is going to set the priorities and we're happy to follow whichever path you think is best for the community. Next slide, please. So the next category is premium pay, and I know Chris touched upon this. The, the thought here is that additional compensation be provided to those staff members who face the greatest health and safety risks because of their service during the pandemic. The maximum benefit is $13 per hour or up to a maximum of $25,000 per person for the duration of the pandemic. We have done a preliminary survey of area towns and we are seeing that a lot of towns are offering a one-time payment to public safety personnel of anywhere between $1,000 to $5,000 per person. And just to give you a sense of what this expense might be, if the board was interested in pursuing it, we have about 100 public safety personnel. And I know there's, there's at least one or more representatives of police and fire union that are here participating this evening. And I know at least one is hoping to make a statement on this particular topic when we get to that point in the agenda. Next slide, please. So then the last two slides, we have one that is economic recovery, one that is infrastructure, and it was really difficult determining which, what to put on each of the slides because a lot of the infrastructure proposals really have to do with strengthening the local economy. So the two categories here are aid to businesses and aid for affordable housing. So aid to businesses, the, I know the Concord Business Partnership is represented here this evening and I won't speak for them, but they, they would like to talk to you about some allocating some of these funds for some additional activities to support local businesses and to market existing vacant properties. And then aid to affordable housing. I know we have representation from the Affordable Housing Trust that, that will speak this evening to talk about a, a request to the, to the trust fund. And I also wanted to note that the Assabett River Bluff Project, there are a lot of partners participating in the purchase of this property. The town has been asked to sort of be in a standby position and to contribute up to $500,000 in the event that the land and the land conservation water fund grant application is not received. And so we do have an earmark in fiscal 23 in our CIP, in the tier-two portion of our CIP as a placeholder in the event that that grant is not received because we don't want to miss out on the opportunity to purchase this property. But this $500,000 placeholder or earmark could also come from ARPA as well. In the final slide, we have identified a number of items and we have three staff members here to speak on these. And before I turn it over to, to the senior management team to talk about these items, I just want to mention, we know that there are an awful lot of capital needs in the community. Many of them are very sizable. We tried to pull out items that would fit within ARPA in terms of size, dollar amounts, if the board was interested in pursuing any of these. And obviously, the much larger capital expenses, we're hoping to be able to apply for some of the federal infrastructure bill funds. So the first speaker is Marsha Brassmerson, the Director of Planning and Land Management.
Good evening, select board members. The pedestrian bridge over the Assabett River, this, this $110,000 is the final amount requested. We are currently seeking CPA funds and a grant to raise $600,000 and this is the final amount necessary for design and permitting of the pedestrian bridge over the Assabett River, which was identified in the 2010 master plan for West Concord and in the Envision Concord 2018 master plan document. So that's, that's where this source of funding is need from. I think Alan Cathcart was. I think Alan Cathcart was going to talk about pedestrian and bike improvements, the next item.
Good evening, Alan Cathcart, Director of Public Works. Going to go back and hearken a little bit to Matt Johnson's statement as far as. There's a lot of planning that went in for our capital plans, I don't disagree that. We don't think do things by accident, we don't ask for things just because we think they might be nice. Public Works identified recently. Needs of over thirty four million dollars over the next five years to do a lot of improvements that are. Within the right of way. Included in that allowance was improvement for pedestrian and bike improvements, we're talking about. Crosswalks, signage, flashing beacons like we've done on Old Marlboro recently. Somewhere in the tune of about eighty thousand dollars per crosswalk, so that's just, I think we're looking about three of them. We hear regularly from the community as far as areas of interest like over at the. Library on Sudbury Road, you know, some improvements could be done there for safety. So we're really looking at just, you know, funding needs we've identified for years and just starting to take a dent, you know, when it comes to. Potassium bike improvements specifically, but not to be confused with our payment management program. I'll also talk about parking lots, in the past, people have heard about. I think the there's eighteen municipal lots in the community, they're used by everybody and benefit. You know, the more densely populated areas and sort of for economic development. We have a backlog of needs on parking lot rehabilitation. This would be an opportunity to start playing catch up. Again, as the comment says in the parades, it's, we're looking for this sort of funding over the next five years consistently. So this might be a good primer to get us going and start tackling some of the needs we have identified and the. Communities I don't, you know, is sort of pointed out to us. I think there was another one, Carrie, you wanted me to talk to. On this, I'm not sure if it was the.
Yeah, it it was actually Stormwater. We didn't get our updated slide in the.
Fair enough, Stormwater is again another, I call it the orphan utility. Concord is a Mecca for surface water, you know, Assabit, Sudbury, Concord River. They're important part of the community with those water bodies are. I think there are a hundred and close to a hundred and sixty, a fairly significant culverts in town. Engineering Division is presently doing an assessment of those, they were last done in two thousand and eleven. We know there are needs. We haven't had a significant investment in some time, you may recall, we did the improvement. Under emergency conditions up on Monument Street by the Sawmill Brook with that. You know, problem we had over the summer, that cost alone six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do an emergency repair. We were lucky, it wasn't significantly more, could have been more catastrophic both for. Traffic inflow from and cutting off the people from Monument in Carlisle, but also a water supply. It was a at risk, so failure to not act can be much more expensive down the road, so those are the items that. I I believe are for consideration, at least for the ARPA funds. I will, then I'm not sure, Marsha, if you want to take the the rest or.
Yeah, Marsha, why don't you finish up yours and and then Kate can.
Well, I think. Chairman Ackerman did an excellent job of across town connect, if we had a bus that we could participate in that. In a more robust fashion, we would be able to better serve the community by providing either for visitors or for. First mile, last mile or alternatives for bringing workers to Concord, so. Having a bus or transit vehicle of some kind would give us greater flexibility to participate in across town connect. Even though the intermunicipal agreement is currently on hold. Because of the because of COVID. The other is the transportation planner, we've we've funded. Part time or half time in FY twenty three, that person would be able to focus. Primarily on transportation issues across the board and help coordinate between public works and planning and other agencies. And then the the request for expanded sewer treatment capacity is is really more. In talking with Alan, he mentioned that it that's a five to ten year plan. But if we had resources or funding that we could put toward. For businesses and for affordable housing projects projects to help. Purchase additional sewer capacity or or the pay the sewer improvement fees, that's that would help. Businesses get into the community or would help support affordable housing projects, so having a funding source set aside. To allow for sewer access for those two areas, businesses and. Affordable housing would be really valuable, and then I think Kate Hodges was going to speak to the other items.
Yep, thanks, Marsha, hi there, Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. So as far as the BD roof replacement, BD closed its doors to members in March of two thousand and twenty. And remain closed for a period of four months and thereafter. The BD operation opened on a very modified and limited basis. And while gyms were able to open at forty percent capacity. Due to a lot of the space shortages and the need to be able to space out the equipment. We BD was really only allowed twenty five percent capacity. Membership levels are dramatic decrease and at fiscal year end, BD had only. Regained about sixty two point eight percent of its membership revenues. Additionally, group fitness had not been able to run for the better part of a year. And that revenue usually brings in somewhere between a hundred and sixteen to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. In two thousand and twenty, the grand total was sixty thousand pre audit amount. And two thousand and twenty one, we're estimating just about the same. So BD was built nearly fifteen years ago and operates year round with their systems, including the dehumidification system. Running twenty four seven, so we were thinking it might be worthwhile to look at the funding to assist BD in the roof replacement. Given both their dramatic losses in revenue, which you know is one of the reasons called out for the funds. And in keeping with the idea that this is a major community asset. It also is important to know that while the town did a great job of of keeping people employed. Through the pandemic, unfortunately, the recreation department and the BD staff were a group that needed to be furloughed. Regarding the expanded broadband service, I know that this was touched upon earlier, the fiber broadband task force has been working. On a comprehensive plan and build out of network capabilities and recent GIS data. Shows that between five percent of resident parcels are without the fiber broadband, meaning that about twenty five percent of households. Don't have connection to the town's fiber network. I recognize that the task force is investigating how to break down those barriers, both economically and structurally. So one area that we thought was to identify potential funding sources such as ARPA that could be identified. To, you know, bridge the gap in what we're missing both for those two, you know, housing places that. Are not covered currently or people who have financial barriers. And then lastly, the expanded cell tower coverage, so this is not a new issue. The town has been discussing issues with cellular connectivity in the downtown area for many years. An RFP was issued for a singular antenna site inside the cupola of Emerson Umbrella in two thousand and sixteen. Ultimately, for a number of reasons, the select board at that time decided not to permit the town manager to execute a lease with the chosen company. And asked us to explore alternate sites. So while that's been ongoing, no particular town site has proven to be viable either because of a string of issues. With citing, meaning that there's there isn't enough room. Or because of historical impact relative to the areas within our various historical districts. So a final plan to construct a town owned co locator or monopole. On the Kai's Road campus were that we were thinking would could be made to look like one of the sites old. Smoke stacks has been recently discussed. Should this be something that the town is interested in pursuing? The cost of erecting this particular type of structure would not be without a fair amount of expense. Additionally, a tower in it or antenna needs to be at least ninety feet tall. And actually really needs to be closer to a hundred and ten feet tall in order to. Be able to get the capacity and range that we need. So that is likely to be visible from the North Bridge and we are in current discussions with the National Park Service. As we work to understand their temperature, so by no means is this a done deal. But that said, the ARPA funds could be used and allocated to offset some of the monies that the town would be to erect. This type of stealth tower or self healthy antenna. It should be noted that the current situation is not only a hardship for our local business community. Where Apple Pay and other cloud or connection type payment apps would be advantageous. It's also a real public safety hazard as cell phone service in the downtown areas, including along the Emerson Throw Anvil. And around the area of the Concord Museum are really spotty cell service at best and more often than not completely non existent. So should we have an appetite for for dealing with that, this would, this could be a good use of of some of the ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you, Kate, Marsha and Alan. This concludes the SMT presentation. And I I think the next item on the agenda is unions and as I I mentioned, I know we have at least one. Union Detective Bordenka from the Concord Police Department.
That's correct.
Yes.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for having us tonight, Ms. LaFleur, Ms. Hodges, thanks for touching upon the mental health stuff that's been going on. It is true, it has increased. I'm only going to take a few minutes of your time tonight. On our union, what we did is we we wrote up a brief statement, kind of what's been going on with how we've. Been handling COVID here at the police department and some of the things that we went through. So I'm just going to read off a brief statement, again, I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone, thank you for giving us the chance to speak tonight. As we discuss the disbursement of the town's opera funds, for those of you who don't know me. My name is Michael Bananca, I'm a detective with the Concord Police Department as well as president of Mascop Local Two Sixty. Here with me tonight is my union executive board Sergeant Luke Rennie, Officers John O'Connor, Josh Bordenka. Anthony Salvucci, Greg Mayu, all who who share a strong commitment for the town and the community's well being. As we all know, our town has been provided approximately five point six million dollars in federal funding through Opera. These transfers are beyond promising for the town of Concord. In the midst of the unprecedented global crisis such as the one unleashed by COVID nineteen. Federal aid was a needed rescue for towns like ours to face who faced major challenges during the pandemic. On September seventh, two thousand and twenty one, interim town manager Carrie LaFleur and the select board before us discussed the opera funds. In a variety of ways they may be dispersed, which included public health and COVID mitigation, which of course is a top priority. Help with economic impacts of public health emergency, which largely affected our town. Towns lost revenue considering the shutdown of most activities. Water, sewer and enhancing the broadband infrastructure, which also translate into a better quality of life for our community. And lastly, premium pay for essential workers that provided additional support. For those who would face the greatest health risk because of their service during this infrastructure. It is undeniable that each of these targets is an essential destination for the federal funds we are here to discuss. Yet we consider that there was one target missing and that would be the Concord Police Department and we don't want to be overlooked. From the moment we put our uniforms on for the first time, it took an oath oath of office protecting and serving our fellow citizens. We're making a currently, we're not making a career choice, but we're making a life choice. Choice that is all about community, service and sacrifice, it's about courage and effort. Every police officer from the Concord Police Department risked their life every day to protect people, to serve people. Wherever there is an incident, they are the first ones to be there, wherever there is a citizen in crisis, they are the first ones to be there. A road accident, they are the first ones to be there, they're the first ones to be there on a medical. In everywhere in town where there is chaos or someone needs help, we're always there first. And they do so by putting our community above everything, including themselves and their loved ones. We should never forget that each officer is a father, mother, son, a sister, a husband and a friend. And that all of these people around them live every day with the uncertainty of not knowing if they're going to return home after their shift. This commitment and sacrifice can be seen every day on our town streets, but trust me when I say that the pandemic has been the best example of this. When the, when fully staffed, the Concord Police Department has thirty two members in our union. Twenty eight of them contracted COVID nineteen at least once, with multiple offices getting it twice. Although research and resources for COVID nineteen has increased. Early in the pandemic, we were left with the stress of the unknown risks that COVID presented. As President Biden stated on August thirty first, two thousand and twenty, more cops have died from COVID this year than have been killed in a patrol car. Sadly, this has made COVID the leading cause of deaths in law enforcement in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one in the United States. There's only one reason for this. There was no working from home for any of us, we're all serving our people once again on the streets. And everywhere the town needed us, exposing ourselves to a virus that terrified the world. Even though offices were constantly decontaminating and wearing PPE that was provided, they still got infected and brought the virus home to their families and loved ones. And the results on our operations was significantly affected. Each one of the twenty eight offices that contracted the virus were not able to work, this created shift vacancies that we struggled to fill. To the point that we had offices who were recovering from COVID to step up and take the vacant shifts. Additionally, we had to leave sick loved ones at home when shifts needed to be covered and struggled with childcare issues, which added greater strain on our families and personal lives. To top it all off, the lockdown and the reduction of people on the streets didn't make our days easier. Since COVID nineteen started, alcohol and mental health related calls for service dramatically increased. Leading our offices to an almost daily journey to Emerson Hospital to assist their security. This increase put our offices at risk even more by having to place people under arrest, transport them to our station. Transport them to court more frequently, in all of which, these are all close contacts. In parallel, the whole team worked extremely hard to make sure we had adequate staffing for rolling drop offs at Concord Schools, vaccination clinics. We had offices deliver countless meals, even medications to families in need. We covered vacant dispatch shifts for sick dispatches and many more COVID related tasks that we accomplished while being short staffed, exhausted. And recovering from COVID. Please don't get us wrong, we are not complaining in the slightest. Under a major global crisis, we we provided services and roads to the occasion. Working day in and day out without hesitation. But this opens a door for a new chapter in our department. Research has shown that when morale within an organization is high, errors and accidents are reduced. This means that we can better serve the citizens of Concord. This is why I and my team are here to ask you to allocate a portion of the funding to the Concord Police Department to provide a premium wage. Doing so would be a recognition to our officers' courage, sacrifice and commitment. And also an investment for the future and well being, for the quality of life in our community. We take great responsibility and pride in our duty and protect our service and protect and serve. We really appreciate it and thank you for your support and consideration on this matter.
Thank you Detective Bordenka and thank you for taking the time this evening to. Come and express your thoughts and opinions about this, but thank you for the service and and the service of all of the men and women of the Concord. Police Department. I I would like to mention that firefighter Brett Mills, who is the president of the firefighters union was also. On the call and and was going to make a similar statement. As it happens, he received a call and he's out in one of the trucks right now, so I just wanted to acknowledge that he was here. And was interested in speaking and we thank the service of all of the men and women of the Concord Fire Department as well.
Well, we thank you for your support and you're giving us the time to speak tonight, thank you.
Thank you Detective Bordenka, I echo Carrie's words and. I think it's very important for the community to have heard your statement, I don't think. Many of us realize. How much sacrifice and how much dedication the officers really provided. In public safety this last two years. in um public safety this last two years. So, thank you to all of you and um.
Thank you.
Um, what I'm going to do next is um I'm going to share my screen very briefly and then we're gonna have a brief question and answer period. What I did was I put together all of the suggestions that I remember and if I've forgotten any, um I know we're getting more, but so far that we've heard tonight, I tried to put them all on this list. So, of course I don't see it. Give me a second here. Let me see if I can find it. Okay, here we go. Can you um, can you see that? Yes.
Yes.
If I've forgotten something, um please raise your hand in the um question and answer period. What I've done is I've listed all the ones that I remember hearing about tonight and as we go along tonight, I'll add all the other ones. Um, we don't have a dollar amount for some of these. Um, but for the ones that we do have a dollar amount, we are already up to two million seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So, um, I think this is a really good meeting so far. We're getting a lot of excellent ideas and I thought it would be good to start making a list. So, um, at the end of the meeting, I'll share the screen again and we'll we'll see what we're up to. So at this time, um, if anybody has questions on the last section or I've forgotten to include something that's already been proposed tonight, uh please raise your hand. Carlin Reed and then Linda.
Hi, Carlin Reed eighty-three would send low income broadband. I don't, you had it under broadband, I don't know. But I think low income is an important component of it. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
And then just quickly, I know that we'll be um talking about this again, but um as numbers get provided perhaps for some of these categories, um, some of them we're already anticipating over the next four to five years and um some were just designated for FY twenty-three. So, um, if we somehow need to s- to um get it on the same measure.
That's right. We have apples and oranges all mixed up here. We're gonna have to sort it. We also have operating and capital all mixed together, which is two sort of different budget processes. We also have enterprise funds and general mix. Everything, you know, while we're running the meeting, we can't sort through it, but I'm sure the staff will will know right away how to sort it. Um, but yes, we've got apples and oranges all mixed up here right now. Uh, other questions on what we've heard? Linda?
Um, are you, are you gonna be having a segment where we ask for some additional ideas?
Yes, the next segment after this is going to be um committees that um are here tonight and then we will have select board ideas and then the ideas from the public and then more question and answers. If nobody has a another question, move right on to the committees. Don't see any questions right now. Okay. So, I know we have a lot of interested committees here. Um. So, the first one that I see is uh Nick Pappas and then Keith Bergman will be next and then Carol Wilson. Nick, go ahead. Whoops, Nick, you're on mute.
Nick Pappas, seventeen forty-three Monument Street, Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee. Uh, get the slides up, uh Chris. There we go. Concord's transportation needs as described in the envisioned Concord Long Range Plan are significant and their unmet needs largely. The Transportation Advisory Committee has discussed ideas that would allow the town to accelerate along accelerate us along the paths outlined in the Long Range Plan. So today, next slide, we're gonna talk about transportation planner, something that's been mentioned. We're also gonna talk about ride services, helping people get around town and outside of town and finally complete streets. Next slide. Transportation planner. In the envisioned Concord Plan, Mobility and Transportation Goal One stated, establish a central transportation planning function within town government. That hasn't been done and it's badly needed. Why was it goal number one? Staffing that position is necessary to make any meaningful progress in transportation. Any transportation work to be done will require research, analysis, coordination among town departments, coordination with other towns, discussing discussions with funding sources, work with outside consultants. It's a lot of work. As we go through the following ideas, considering, consider the work required to get them off the ground and keep them moving along. That's what a transportation planner would be involved in. Next slide. The envisioned Concord Transportation objections, objectives, objections included A, transportation services for underserved members of the community, the elderly, disabled, young people, workers, the economically disadvantaged. Transportation services to aid economic vitality were another objective, as well as sustainable transportation options and improvements to public safety. The Planning Department obtained a grant to implement a first mile, last mile. Um, yeah, a first mile, last mile bus service. This bus was aimed at serving the uh those who are underserved and in support of small businesses. This service would have started at the West Concord Depot. It would have gone out to MCI Concord at the Rotary. That which reminds me, Wade Wade Rubenstein used to tell me of families walking back from the prisons to the train station, stopping in for ice cream and cones. We know there's a need for that level of service there. The route would then go out to Baker Ave, would have gone to Baker Ave uh to service the medical community, then Emerson Hospital, then across Route Two to further serve the medical community, then the Thoreau Business District, then Downtown Business Center, then along Lexington Road and finally out to Virginia Road where there are other businesses. A grant was obtained for this, but the grant was rescinded because of the pandemic. The Planning Department also obtained, uh, sorry, the Planning Department also attempted to provide regional transit through the Cross Town Connect Program. This effort would have required funding that was not available. After discussing these programs and other unmet needs, the Transportation Advisory Committee suggests that police services be consolidated into a single proposal and then further enhanced by the addition of a micro-transit service that would serve the same groups while adding an on-demand level of service that would include rides for the low-density areas of the town. This aspect of the service would be similar to the micro-transit services being offered in Newton, Berkshire County and other municipalities in Massachusetts. We imagine a seamless blend of these three concepts that would appear to residents and workers as a single transportation service entity. Okay, Kathleen Fasser will now talk about the next um, next idea.
You bring up the next slide, please. My name is Kathleen Fasser. I'm a member of Transportation Advisory Committee, live at forty-six hour Head Road. And um, by way of introduction, uh Nick asked that I mention uh that I'm a professional landscape architect, um, having worked on many projects um on uh mobility and transportation, including complete streets. So, the Transportation Advisory Committee um also came to uh the idea of funding uh a complete streets design project. Um, the definition of a complete street is on the right as um a street that uh provides safe and accessible options for all travel modes, walking, biking, transit and vehicles for people of all ages and abilities. That statement uh pretty well covers many, many of the goals outlined in Envision twenty thirty. There, so there is a big community interest that supports complete streets. Um, what we're proposing would address um areas of greatest use within the town and with greatest needs. And we feel that because of um the design process and construction process, the time is now to fund this design. So I'm going to go through a couple of other slides. Next slide, please. To walk you through the process um that we walked through to get to this pla- this position. Um, there have been many efforts to date, uh including uh Concord's Complete Street Policy that's been written, the Complete Streets Prior- Prioritization Plan, Mastioti's Complete Streets Funding Program Project Prioritization Plan and Envision Concord. And through all of that, um there became a list by which projects should be evaluated. From the Mastioti effort, there is a list that's the bottom left. I won't go into all of the details of what should be considered for identifying streets as priorities for complete street projects. Within Envision Concord, there are the community criteria that have been identified to help identif- to help prioritize the streets that should be addressed. Next slide, please. So taking all of this into consideration, our idea is to have a comprehensive complete streets design for Concord that will have the greatest impact. Next slide, please. So our conversation started here, the area in um the pink circle. And we feel that this area uh brings to bear on one of our greatest uh areas of use and need. This uh project of complete streets uh would bring uh to reality the uh balance of that complete streets philosophy and the historic and natural character that is so important and has been identified regularly uh within Envision. As well as this particular area of downtown Concord uh complements and should be coordinated with the current project that is occurring occurring on Hubbard Street. So the Hubbard Street project is in yellow on the screen and then the pink streets is sort of this downtown area that we started our conversation at. Next slide, please. After that, we then considered some of the larger important connections such as to West Concord and up to the Bedford Line, as well as isolated areas out route uh to A to some of the neighborhoods that um feel more connected to Acton than to Concord as well as to isolated areas down towards Nine Acre Corner. And the conclusion was that something on this scale that's shown on the plan needs to be done. Just as a point of reference, there are different colors on these. Basically, all that says is that it's a very complex, large project um and uh with different areas, so we colored them differently for reference. Next slide, please. So what uh we feel this does is it brings a bigger conversation, needs to happen for the complete streets to be done properly. This air, these areas that are located, shown on this plan need to be thought of holistically, how they interact with each other, the design standards upon which they should um all be set um and how they coordinate with each other for before construction projects are identified and before they are executed. Because this is such a large project, we feel it's important to fund the design phase of this whole area cur- right now. Um, because the time is going to be needed for a robust community engagement process which should happen before any of the um construction projects move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um Nick and Kathleen. That was very informative. Um, thank you. Next, uh we go to Keith Bergman.
Uh, thanks very much, Keith Bergman, fifty-six White Avenue, uh speaking as Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing uh Trust. And first I wanna uh thank the Select Board for uh holding this uh focused meeting and for uh giving us the opportunity to um to uh participate. Uh, the uh the Trust respectfully requests uh that the Select Board uh use some ARPA funding to support affordable housing goals in Concord and in particular, we're looking uh for uh five hundred thousand dollars uh for the um the trust for uh the coming year. Um, you may recall the the trust uh came about from a series of measures that were approved by town meeting in twenty nineteen, uh adoption of the state statute that allows a town to create a municipal affordable housing trust. Very importantly, the filing of two home role petitions uh which would create dedicated funding sources in the long term for the trust. Uh, those are uh proposed real estate transfer fee and a proposed of building uh permit surcharge, both of which are still pending in the legislature. And then thirdly, to sort of uh come up with some uh stopgap funding in the meantime uh while the uh legislation made made its way through so that we could begin to do something uh with an affordable housing trust. And we're thankful that for the last three town meetings, uh five hundred thousand dollars per year has been uh transferred from uh free cash to fund articles and that's been great. We understand though that this year and very likely in the near future, free cash is not going to be a funding source that's available to us and and so uh we have been exploring uh uh alternative uh funding sources uh in the near term. Um, and one of them that we have uh would like to be able to pursue is the the one-time ARPA funds that we would hope that some of those might be uh made available, uh beginning with uh uh as as a funding source for an appropriation uh for the coming fiscal year. We're grateful that the Select Board to give us a chance to get town meeting funding had inserted an article uh again uh with with I think an unspecified funding source on us unspecified uh amount perhaps, but uh we we would gladly uh abandon the pursuit of town meeting funding if if we uh if ARPA funds uh would be available for us. So so uh we wanted to identify that as a specific uh thing that we'd like to uh pursue. Affordable housing is one of the uh ARPA funds and the uh is one of the purposes which ARPA funds can be used. Uh, and we would uh be uh happy to uh to uh be using uh any funds deposit, any ARPA funds deposited in the trust for purposes that would constitute ARPA-eligible affordable housing projects. So we appreciate the opportunity to pitch and and to uh and to put ourselves on the radar screen and uh and thanks very much.
Right, thank you very much, Keith. I think that um both affordable housing and transportation are really good examples of what I said before that they accomplish many of the goals that we want to accomplish in town anyway and goals of the ARPA. Another um group that is accomplishing many goals with their projects is the business group and we have Carol Wilson here to um speak to us.
Thanks, Terry. Thank you very much. It's nice to be here this evening. Um, I'm Carol Wilson. I live at four nineteen Main Street. I'm a member of the Board at the Concord Business Partnership. The Concord Business Partnership um is made up of 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 forty-five different uh commercial property owners and business owners and it's been around for almost thirty years. And one of our goals has always been um to um strengthen the bond between the business community and the town. Um, and we've had many successes in doing that over the years. Many of our members um have served on multiple boards um as a way to connect and be um have a more relevant role in 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 running the town. Um, we've worked with different groups, um and most recently with COVID, um helped to form the Economic Vitality Committee. Um, and they've worked with some of the business folks in town. And they've worked with some of the business folks in town, including the Chamber of Commerce and the town, and, and created the tourism management position. Beth Williams is doing a great job with that. So all of those things have been wonderful in helping our businesses and our communities stay healthy as much as we can during these COVID days, but there's still so much more to do. I think, when I think back with the partnership, back even in the, in the late 90s, what we really were realizing is that it's, it's difficult for people to get started in business. It's difficult for people to be successful in business in this town. And, and our goal is trying to kind of make that more important. Our business, our business districts are really the heart of the community. People work here. This is where their jobs are. These are the services that they depend on. Our kids come to these businesses and looking for support and mentoring, and we, we welcome that. And there are so many ways that we interact. And I think at this point, with the, with the ARPA funds available, it's, it seems like it's finally an opportunity for us to kind of speak to the town about the need for someone that really is kind of sort of the mentor and maybe in the guiding light for people to help them through the process of finding a place to have a business and grow their business and serve the people of Concord. It's very complicated and a very difficult process if you want to come into town and start a business. There's this permitting that needs to be done. There's boards that you need to present in front of. There's consultants that you need to hire. And it can be a very arduous and very confusing process. And sometimes people get discouraged and they find that it's, it may be easier to, to start a business someplace else. So the purpose of this, we wrote the letter to the, to the Select Board was basically to say that, you know, a director of business development, somebody that helps the businesses when they're trying to find a place. Is this the right place for them to be? What do we need to do to get these things done? Would be a huge help to the town. All of the other folks that we've heard from tonight with very important needs really have highlighted that in pretty much every single one of those situations, the business community is impacted, certainly with the infrastructure, certainly with, you know, with transportation and signage and broadband and cell service, et cetera. The town and the business community work, need to work very closely together. And in order for that really to happen at this point, I think the business community would like to see that there's a person at the table on the senior management level that's working in conjunction with everyone else so that our business community is strong and that when we have vacancies and when we have things, people that are struggling, there's a way to kind of bring them along and, and keep our town as vibrant as possible. So we would love to have your consideration. I think it's a really important role, not only as a citizen of, of the town, but also as a former business owner and a, and a property owner, to have that, that ombudsman person that can help bridge the gap between making a business successful and looking to another town to take their business. So thank you for the opportunity this evening. I know it's, there's a lot of wonderful projects on the table, and we hope that, that this for the town, the good of the town and the good of all of us is something we can finally get accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And we will go next to Mark Howell.
Thank you, Terri. The, I'll make a few, sorry, I'll make a few additional comments about broadband specifically. I, I obviously support everything that Kate mentioned. She's exactly right. But I thought I'd add a little bit more detail on that. The, the community broadband service, of which we're all justifiably proud, actually inadvertently turned out to not be deployed in a way that is necessarily equitable in our community. It's an unfortunate truism that the housing and to some extent, the business areas that are lower cost and more affordable and multifamily are disproportionately not served by our current infrastructure. That actually also extends to the business community that Carol was just talking about. The downtown areas, some of those are particularly difficult to access. And we, while we have some programs that are oriented towards maintaining our roadway infrastructure for transportation and undergrounding the electric utility systems, those revolving funds that we address each and every year in town meeting are actually not available to promote the expansion of the fiber broadband network into some of these areas which are underserved. The, the US Treasury has already ruled on some of the uses of ARPA funds, and they have indicated that, that a community can in fact declare areas which may already have an existing provider as underserved for the purposes of spending ARPA funds on additional services which can support education, can support sustainability, and can continue to support housing needs and economic goals for the community. So we're just getting started. We're working very hard in the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force to identify the specifics of the various areas that are, that are obviously underserved. There's quite a bit more work that can be done there. One specific gap that we have noted, though, is that when, as we go and reconstruct roads as part of the regularly scheduled road programs, we are really missing opportunities each and every year to provide fiber optic services as well in support of, of those broadband goals. And each year we do that, that can be five to 20 years before it might be an opportunity to go back and re-serve that area. So it's important for us to consider being timely about this. We all know that the broadband service is relatively new and doesn't have a lot of funds, but we could anticipate making a recommendation out of our committee to see a revolving fund would be replaced by broadband revenues over time that could jumpstart getting these extensions made and started so that we don't miss some of these critical opportunities. I, I'm sure I don't have to remind anybody who's using their broadband connection and Zoom to come to this meeting just how much more dependent we have become on broadband in the last two years. And I don't think there's anybody that expects that that in any way, shape, or form is going to go back to, to what we were used to before. The expectations are higher. The competitive communities are going to be higher, and there's no doubt that communities that can't offer that are going to suffer. So this is an opportunity to address some, some equity problems that we have and also address some competitiveness issues that we can foresee. So we'll look forward to continuing to work through this process. And we do think that, that broadband needs to be better understood and, and used as a way to, to contribute to some of these other very important goals. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any other committees that would like to speak before we go on to the Select Board and the public? Okay, let's take ideas, comments, and questions from members of the Select Board. Susan.
Hi, I want to say thank you to all the committees that came tonight. I certainly have learned a lot, and there are many valuable projects that this, these funds could be used for. I think, and Linda had brought this up before, but I think it's important that, I was reminded when Mark was speaking about broadband that we'd be able to isolate, in that case, what is the total, like, what is the total amount of the project? It's obviously a capital project, and what's the involvement in that case of CMLP? And we need a little bit more breakout versus the, what the police, public safety is asking for, which is sort of a one-time thing. So I think it's important as this spreadsheet develops to be able to look at the totality of what we're, what we're talking about in each area.
Absolutely. Like, some of the items are salaried people, new positions, which would carry on every year in an operating budget. Others are one-time salary issues. Others are one-time capital issues. Others are enterprise fund. We're going to have to figure out how to put together. Absolutely. Other comments from Select Board members?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to add to the lengthy list of very worthwhile initiatives, many of which I support. But I also could only evaluate these in the context of, let's say, capital spending for a bus. What's our capital spending plan? What are the other items that we may or may not be able to fund because of this thing? And, you know, the same with salaried positions. Do we hire another person? Well, what is our overall, you know, personnel budget and hiring plan? You know, I don't want to look at this in isolation. Capital project to, to build a cell tower, I, you know. I, I think these are, these are great things. Many of them we've wanted to do for some time. I just would rather see sort of the level of, of water or funding, you know, available go up as a result of this that may enable us to do some of these things, but do them in the broader context of our overall town spending, because hopefully every dollar that we spend is worthwhile spending for various initiatives. If you look at the timeframe where the funds can be deployed, which really four fiscal years from FY '22 through to FY 2025. So, you know, it's only $1.4 million per year for four years that we could potentially, you know, deploy here. So that's, that's another way to look at it. I don't know that it necessarily has to, you know, all be in, in one. It, it, it doesn't really make a huge difference, I guess. In the end, it does help somewhat is what I was really getting at.
Right. Okay. Uh, Henry and Linda? Linda?
Um, so I too felt that, you know, there are so many excellent projects here that we could consider. The context will be important. I was struck as I was listening to this that I know that in terms of personnel category, that we also were unable to award additional funding to our non-union personnel for at least one of the years. And I know that there is a plan to try to bring our compensation scales more in line. And I'm wondering if that also needs to go on the consideration list. And the other thing that I was struck with listening to this is that we in fact may have some very select other categories of personnel who were on the front line in terms of full-time exposure to the public, and whether or not that also needs to be looked at. In terms of the affordable housing category, I think there are some specific, certainly that's an emphasis area in the ARPA funds in terms of reaching equity. And there are, again, looking at the context, the overall context and, and plans, some of which are not currently available in terms of the new housing production plan. But as the new housing production plan is put together and we have new census data in terms of where we stand, there may be some other specific projects that could benefit from ARPA funds going to affordable housing. So again, that's looking beyond year one here, but looking out. And then I'm, I'm, I'm also struck with there have been some rapid changes that our personnel have had to deal with across departments. And I'm wondering if we need some additional consulting funds or training funds that would benefit and put us in a position to move forward as an investment to move forward. So I think I'll stop there.
Okay, good ideas. I, I got most of them written down. Thank you. Do you have anything that you would like to add? Henry, do you, Henry? Nope. Okay.
Nothing to add.
All right. Okay, we're going to move on to ideas and comments and questions from the public. Start with Dory Kehoe and then Tanya or Mark Galis.
Thank you very much. I, I've been listening to all these wonderful ideas. And I, I just, I think this is sort of like a windfall. Okay, so we've got it. Now how are we going to spend it? Is there some way that can be made clear? We don't need to do all this now. We have four years. Is that correct to spend this funding?
Yes.
And may I, may I make a suggestion that we don't know what's going to happen four years from now? And we didn't know this was all going to happen when it did, this pandemic. So I would really like to say, as, as much as all of these are great ideas, that, that you may fund some of them, but there's be a fund put aside for the rainy day that may come that we don't know about. So we, we're ready with that when it, when it's needed. I think we've learned a lesson from this in much of the way that we live and how we plan our days and months ahead. So please just consider that. We don't need to spend all of this money at one fell swoop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dory. If I could just comment on that. First of all, we're not ready to spend all of this money. We have a lot planning to do. Secondly, we have to spend it all by 2026. We're not allowed to put it in a rainy day fund. So just to clarify that.
But, but, but we don't need to spend it now, all, all of it. We can hold off some. What I'm suggesting is, I think we've all learned about that we can't predict the future. And so we don't, if we said to ourselves, okay, we're going to spend X amount by 2025, and we're holding off a chunk of this so that should something happen and we need money right then, it's there and available. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll go now to Tanya Galis.
Hi, Tanya Galis, 62 Prescott Road. Thank you for a great meeting. What I missed in the discussion was was that there was no particular focus on elder services on the Council on Aging and Disability Commission either. So that's one comment. And relatedly to this as a subset of this, but it also affects other people. The cross-town connect and bus service, that's a great idea. Thank you for everyone who's supporting that, staff and committees. It has become particularly important in the, it, it got my attention when our voting place recently changed precinct four from Ripley School, which is near many houses here to Hunt's Gym. And I think over time, a lot of people are going to need some transportation help to, 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 to be voting actively. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to Diane Proctor and then Mary Hartman.
Thank you, Terri and the Select Board. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Terri, I, I want to make a comment about this meeting, and then at the end, I need to make a formal comment because there is an emergency issue that I need to address from the board, legal, the Board of the Legal and Voters, okay? But I just want to thank you for such an extraordinarily thoughtful meeting. And I'm particularly impressed by the vigor and the energy of people who have put themselves on the line when many of us were, were unwilling or unable to do so for one reason or another. And I think that was a particularly poignant aspect of what we, what we heard tonight. But I'm also touched by Linda Escobedo's comment that there are probably other people on that list who also were at risk, and how we take those into consideration, I think, is not unimportant. So one other, just very brief comment, I, I may have misread the, the cross-town bus, but I didn't see it going by Newberry Court, Nick and others. And I think that, I know that there are many people at Newberry Court who have issues of transportation and by the hospital. I may have misread the chart and no one needs to respond to that, but I hope that's taken into consideration. I'll speak at the end, if that's okay, Terri. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Just to respond, Diane, there are three different bus proposals. And there's one that has a specific route. And the others go right to the door of the people who, who call. So we're going to have an entire focused meeting in March about transportation. And we can go over the details at that time.
Yes, man. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is Mary Hartman and then Chris Reynolds.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you for, to the select board and Terry and the town for having this meeting. The information we had about ARPA was pretty fragmented and it helped me to understand how much is available and what qualifies. Listening to tonight's meeting, I realized that there are a lot of different requests. And if you add them all up, I bet they're not the twenty-nine million that Sudbury came up with, but they're probably more than the five to six million that we have. So we're going to have to prioritize them. And as to Matt's point earlier, the budget process goes through town meeting. So we have governance there as far as whether the recommendations of the budget process are going to be approved. In this case, we don't have town meeting. So we've got to set our own priorities. And when I was going through tonight's, when I was listening tonight, I heard some of the priorities. And as Carrie mentioned at the beginning, equity is the primary focus of these funds. And the other ones I heard were, how many touch points does it have around some of the other goals that Congress has? But I wanted to put one out there, which is, I think we should also think about what, which of these requests are investments that a few years down the road will be glad we made? So, and the reason I bring that up is some of the investments we make, like maybe sewer treatment or broadband are big ticket items that might not get funded through this ARPA. And yet, down the road, they might have given us more bang for the buck as far as the other goals that we're trying to meet. So I would just like to keep that in mind when you're putting together, what's the list of priorities that we're going to use when we do in fact fund these requests? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you very much. Chris, and then Matt Johnson.
Thanks, Terry. Chris Reynolds, fifteen Captain Miles Lane. Chair of FinCom, I'm speaking for myself here. So as, as we observe the budget process during the past couple of years when things were tight, one of the things that we saw, which we thought was appropriate, was that cuts were made but not headcount, right? So we, we viewed the impacts of the pandemic as temporary. And so we wanted to make sure that services at the school and the town were maintained. I think we, we did that, but we certainly cut discretionary spending where we could. And as Linda mentioned, we held tight where we could on, on increases because we had to. We had, we had significant drops in local receipts. So now, as we have the ability perhaps to get some of that money back, one suggestion would be to go back and look at the past couple of budgets and understand what were the things that we didn't do that perhaps we felt we needed to do, that we could make this money up with. Because that's what the lost revenue component, I believe, is for. It's to help you get back to where you needed to be on public services. So to me, that would be the first place to start. And obviously, folks have come forward with some other great ideas. But that's one way to think about prioritizing it. And I'm a bit of a broken record on this one, but I'll also point out if there's any way that some money could be used to help with the middle school. Let's get it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Matt Johnson and then Kate Yoder.
Yeah, so I was just going to respond to the earlier comment that we couldn't use this money to create a rainy day fund. But again, if we can use this money to offset revenue losses, which are by definition exceed the amount we're allocated, we can take that money to offset those losses and then separately create a rainy day fund because we now have more money. So we, we would not be using the money directly for that purpose. But we could use money for any purpose as part of our budget process, including the middle school, you know, or any of these other initiatives. So I, I just want to say, we could achieve the same effect. It, you know, it's, we don't have to treat this. I know I've broken record of this. Also, I just wanted to say that I found Detective Bordinka's statement quite moving. Because I think we hear a lot about frontline healthcare workers, but a lot less about those that are serving, you know, on the front lines in other ways. And to hear the statistics about the number who contracted COVID and, and those other details was quite striking. So I thank Detective Bordinka for that statement and all of our service members on the front lines.
Thank you. Kate Yoder and then Nick Pappas.
Kate Yoder of seventy-nine Deergrass Lane. I'm actually here tonight as the Chair of the West Concord Cultural District. And I was asking for, I might have missed this in the beginning, but consideration for aid for the artist and cultural institutions within the town of Concord and over on our side in West Concord. As this also will help with the hospitality and tourism in our areas. And so I hope that is something that is being considered during this budgeting process.
Okay, we will add that to the list. Thank you. Nick Pappas.
Yeah, just quickly for Diane Proctor, the shuttle bus proposal that had been made before that we were incorporating in our presentation did have a stop possibility at Newbury Court. So it was thought of.
Thank you, Nick. I was sure you had, but I just didn't see it in the, in the, in the bright lines. So I really appreciate your comment.
Great. Thank you, Nick. Is there anyone else who would like to make a suggestion? Let me share what I've got right now. And we can see this has run. What is that? I don't have everything spelled right. But, okay, rainy day fund indirectly output. Okay, so let's move this up. What we can do is, we can post this list. And we can keep thinking. So we have mental health, substance abuse, lost revenue, parking, SABIT plus, housing trust, additional affordable housing projects, premium pay, Director of Business Development, Assapit River Bridge, pedestrian and bike improvements, parking lot rehab, beating roof, three different types of bus service, transportation planner, complete streets, design phase, seed money to expand broadband, broadband access, broadband for low income, expand cell service, expand sewer treatment, salary catch-up of several types, middle school, rainy day fund, senior citizens, services for the disabled and restore services and salaries that were cut during the pandemic. So yes, if we put numbers on all of these, we will be over the five million pretty likely. But still, this is a very good list. It's a very, very good beginning. If I've forgotten anybody, please raise your hand. We'd like to get a good list at the end of this meeting. I see Kathleen. You have a question or comment?
Yes, I'm actually now speaking as a, as a citizen, not for the TAC. The question that I have is relative to behavioral health item and whether or not these funds can be used at the schools. I know certainly for, relative to the high school, there was a huge need for behavioral health and emotional health support at the high school, even coming into the pandemic. And certainly, since then, it's only gotten significantly, if not severely worse. So if there's any way to include the schools as part of that funding or any monies that go towards behavioral health or the services be allowed to be used at the schools, I think that would be great use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lois Suarez.
Lois Suarez, thirty-four Everett Street. I didn't hear you mention the fire department. Maybe it was there, but I, I missed it. I mean, I just, I just heard the, you know, a few minutes ago, I did hear the sirens go down Walden Street. It's, they're obviously within earshot of my apartment. But I didn't hear. And I know definitely pandemic-wise, they were absolutely stretched. And I happen to be lucky, lucky enough to be unlucky enough to have the need, but lucky enough, they were there to be transported during that time. And things were very tense on the crew just because of the possibilities of COVID and different things. Just, I didn't hear from them tonight because I guess the chief had to go out.
Right. Um, I think that all the public safety people are included in the proposal for this premium pay.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't catch that. Thank you.
Hey, I don't see any other comments right now. So we're going to talk about, oh, well, Diane, can we take your comment? And we're not adjourning the meeting yet. So I know you want to talk about, let's stick with ARPA and then we'll do that other issue.
No problem at all.
Okay, Stefan Bader.
I was, I, I don't know whether the definition of public safety in this context extends to the Board of Health, say, or the Public Works Department. They're not the police or fire or first responders as such, but they certainly also were out there in the pandemic in situations that many of the rest of us were willing to stay home and safe.
Carrie, do you know the answer to that?
So it definitely extends to public health. And I think we would have to do a bit more research to determine whether or not it would extend to public works. I think you can certainly make a case for, for water and sewer. I have seen some language that employees tied to those operations could be included, but, but broad across public works. We have to do some additional research into that.
Okay, so let's talk about next steps. Obviously, we have a lot of good suggestions tonight. And this is only the first of several meetings. Carrie and I floated around some ideas. Maybe I should, Carrie, maybe you want to talk about what you think we should do next, or, you know, survey or how to categorize those things on the list.
Sure. So we definitely would like to talk about next steps. If nothing else, we'd like to know if there are things that you've heard this evening that are completely off the table that you don't want us to continue looking into or investigating. That would be helpful. I, I did, or I have heard that several communities are using a survey. So once some priorities are identified or, or general topics of priorities, I've seen some really nice surveys that are being sent out to poll the community to determine interest in, in the particular priorities, especially since the funding is limited. So that's an approach that we could take. Or, I, again, I, I'm not sure if there's anything you've heard this evening that, that really would be completely off the table. I also think it would be helpful to maybe have some further discussion about the lost revenue versus making allocations because that, that definitely would color the, the work that we do between now and the next time that you want to meet to discuss this.
Right. I think another first step is maybe you and I, Carrie, could take an initial pass at it. And then possibly with the SMT or the finance people or even the FinCom, we need to categorize all the things on the list as operating versus capital and, and one time versus ongoing and enterprise fund versus general fund and all of that. And we also need to get some estimates. For example, premium pay is going to be a hundred thousand or five hundred thousand. So we need to put in some placeholder numbers in there and start working up a good list. Are there some other next steps that the select board members would like to see happen before we talk about this again? Susan?
Yeah, I'd just like to encourage anybody who's, who's perhaps watching on TV or not here at the meeting, but has other, Linda alluded to this earlier, other needs that we, we haven't touched on at all that would fit into any of these categories, the long-range plan, ARPA funding, cross-silo, any underserved areas. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. We should have some ability. Maybe Chris or Erin could put something on the website where we list these ideas that we have so far and people can add to it. Or opine that they think something should be off the table or whatever. Okay, Linda?
You know, I, I think we did hear from the public this evening that at least specifically, we did not hear specific ideas targeted to seniors or disability population. And we know that there are needs in both of those areas. So maybe we could seek out some, the committees weren't necessarily represented tonight and/or the departments so specifically. So maybe we could hear some more in those areas.
That's a very good idea. I'm going to email the chairs of both committees. And I invite them to watch this meeting on the YouTube channel and to also send us in their ideas and the liaisons to those committees. If you want to follow up with that, that would be great. The Commission on Disabilities and the Council on Aging.
On the liaisons for both of those.
Okay, thanks, Susan. That would be great. Kate?
Yeah, hi. I'm, I'm the department head for that and the town's ADA coordinator. So both of those initiatives that I talked about regarding mental health programming and transportation initiatives are ones that were discussed at the human services level. And so, you know, I'm representing both of those hats when we talk about that because those were the major things that are, are facing both those communities and not equally, of course, but transportation is certainly a, a major issue as is the complete streets types of thoughts for, certainly for disability commission and, and, you know, the people who may serve. And as far as Council on Aging and Senior Services, the mental health is, is really been a major issue and something that we have not done a, you know, a great job being able to keep up with as far as training wise. But certainly, those workers, you know, it's just like the police and fire. They, they were in the entire time doing, doing home visits and, and that kind of stuff. And so I think that we can come back and talk about it again, but I think you're going to hear a lot of, a lot of what we talked about this evening.
Thank you. Yeah. Tanya, your hand is up.
Yep, thank you. And thank you, Kate. I want to sort of add something else in terms of the services for the elderly in terms of, and this also connects to the request about arts programs that I think for mental health benefit and arts have a great place. So, so there could be a connection there in terms of funding more arts programs and also directing some, some of the funds for arts programs for the elderly, disabled and mental health impaired community or for all of us. We, we all need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So right at this time, I guess I would invite Diane Proctor, who's been waiting patiently to make an announcement. right at this time, um, I guess I would invite Diane Proctor, who's been waiting patiently to make an announcement.
Thank you, Terry, so much. Uh, the League of Voters Board has been meeting extensively during the day today uh, because we've received some concerning news, um, about what has been sent out in emails to people. And we have crafted the following statement, which I would like to be able to read to everyone. "The League of Voters is disappointed to learn that the video of our candidate forum held on January 27th, featuring the two candidates running for the position on the school committee, has been edited and redistributed as fragments that no longer appear to fairly represent the views of both candidates as expressed during the forum. For years, it has been the League's policy that our videos be disseminated only in their entirety. Uh, in our forums, the League endeavors to provide equitable opportunities for all candidates to present their positions to the public. The integrity of any political action is an essential component of League values. Therefore, we urge you to reply, uh, to rely, I'm sorry, only on the full video versions of the candidate forum that are posted on the League's website, wvcc.org and on the Minuteman Media Network, uh, when becoming informed about the candidate's views and the differences in their positions. The League of Voters does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The League of Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand uh, voting rights and to ensure that everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education and litigation at the local, state and national levels. Thank you for allowing me to make this statement."
Thank you, Diane. Um, are there any other, um, comments, questions or ideas about ARPA infrastructure? I don't see any right now. Um, then, um, I think we can adjourn this meeting and I do really want to thank everybody who worked on it. The senior management team put a lot of time in, uh, Carrie Lefler put a lot of time in, uh, the committee members who were here definitely spent an awful lot of time on your committees. A lot of good ideas came out. So thanks to everybody for your energy and your dedication to the town. We will continue to discuss this, um, over the next several years for sure. And, um, I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Go ahead.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson. Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Thank you.